Okay, so I'm gonna move right along. Matt, welcome. You're gonna give us a briefing on the activities of the Affordable Housing Committee.
So, thanks. I'm here. Andre asked me to attend today specifically also because of the Affordable Housing Report that's being submitted after this. So I'll be around for the whole meeting if there are any questions that can be directed to me, I'm happy to help. I've just been doing the rounds of local government the last couple of weeks, reporting on a couple of things. One is the wrap-up of the term of the Housing Committee, and there's a report that may be on today's package that summarizes the work that we've done and some next steps. So I just wanted to talk to those next steps really briefly before going into my presentation on a strategic plan, and that is to say that, you know, there are a number of -- there are a number of development opportunities, as you know, that we're working on through the newly formed Housing Society, one of which is working with the town of Gibson. So I'll actually be back here in a few weeks. Andre and I have met, and we're in the process of framing the proposal for looking at land a little bit more closely. So we're returning to the town of Gibson's top program, we've discussed in terms of potential parcels and sizes and densities. The, you know, other projects that are ongoing are development of supportive housing and a permanent shelter in Seashells, and we're having some very, I think, promising discussions with B C Housing at this point. It's still early, but I think it's, yeah, it's looking positive. Some other work with regards to the committee specifically, so the committee has completed its three-year term, but one of the things that the Housing Society would like to do is continue to meet quarterly, because we feel that having elected representatives, staff, and then representatives of the community present to share information and what's going on in the community with regards to the housing has been really useful. So, meeting approximately every three months. So we're in the process of revising our terms of reference that we would then send around to the local governments, and, you know, we can answer any questions about how things may shift a little bit, but essentially the committee will be housed within the Housing Society. We're not necessarily asking for more money than just participation from the part of elected representatives once every few months. One part of that is that we'll be looking to become a formal referral body for new developments. So if there are questions around developments happening in Gibson's or Seashell to the S C R D, they would have an affordable housing component. Or, for example, if there's a density bonus or a density increase and there's an amenity contribution, it's an opportunity to balance it off another community committee, and so we'd be looking to fulfill that role within all three of the local governments. So that's sort of the process that we're working on right now. Those are some of the next steps, but the Housing Society is moving forward and exploring opportunities. And in particular, you know, working around, there's a couple of community priorities that I'll talk to a little bit more when looking at the strategic plan that the Housing Society is involved in, and that is, you know, the land trust, we're just not allowed to use the term "trust" in a nonprofit name now, according to the Provincial Financial Commissioner. So the way I've been reframing it is that it's our new Housing Society that's adopting the model of a community land trust for housing. So, any questions with regards to that report? I'd be happy to take now, or I can just jump right into the strategic plan for the meeting. So again, you know, I'm just gonna do a really quick summary. The strategic plan is not very long, so I would encourage you to have a read-through it in-depth if you get a chance, but just to give a quick overview of what we mean when we're talking about affordable housing as it's presented at the beginning of this report, is that there are really three areas of housing when you think about the spectrum. Emergency and supportive housing, which is usually heavily subsidized by senior levels of government. This is everything from shelters to mental health housing to women's emergency or transitional housing, such as the types that community services runs. Then a step up from that is non-market housing, which is typically, there aren't services or supports in place, but there may be subsidies, or it may just be structured so that the cost of housing, whether it's ownership or rental, is coming in at below-market rates. And so typically, this is where the land trust is really looking at focusing its efforts is at slightly below median income households, or below median earning households. So coming in at sort of low end of market or below-market to market rates for a lot of the developments, and that's the kind of social enterprise model of housing. And again, to reiterate, you know, the Housing Needs Assessment really highlights security of tenure for rental units as one of the key issues facing us on the coast. And I think that really it's a cornerstone of a healthy housing market is to have a secure and healthy and affordable rental market. And then finally goes to the market end of housing, which generally takes care of itself, although, again, there are opportunities for collaboration with private developers if there's a market development, often to an amenity contribution, a non-market or an affordable component can be part of a new development. So again, I'm sure I've shown you this slide probably three or four times within the last six months or a year, but you have four sort of key community groups or demographic groups that we've identified. Very few resources for the homeless population, particularly those with concurrent disorders, so addictions and mental health, and I think that was really highlighted by the loss of an individual here in Gibson's when the shelter was unable to open earlier this fall. And since then, we've had good support from B C Housing in maintaining the shelter for the winter, but we're also looking towards those long-term solutions. Seniors as a group are a large and growing member here on the Sunshine Coast, and by 2031 are projected to represent over a third of the local community population. Renters in core housing need, there are about 840 at the moment, and that's projected to grow to nearly 1,200 by 2036. And then, as I mentioned earlier, one of the key areas that we see is the kind of first-time homeowners or people who are above the poverty line and therefore not eligible for affordable or subsidized housing, but may not be able to get into the market. And we see this particularly with regards to homeownership, that the median, the growth of median income has not matched the pace of the increase of median dwelling values. So, you know, that's a challenge for first-time buyers, people looking to get into the market for the first time, and young families. So, I'm not gonna reiterate, this is a slide on the Housing Committee, you're aware of it, but just some of the things that have been accomplished that are in that report summarizing the term, you know, we were able to update the needs assessment, we've been working with stakeholders to raise awareness and address housing issues, there was a review of policy and zoning bylaws across all the Sunshine Coast jurisdictions, we've conducted research into various potential housing models for the delivery of new housing and land trusts in particular, and have recently incorporated a nonprofit entity to act as a community land trust. And then finally, the sort of cap on three years is the development of this sustainable, or this strategic plan, which has a number of opportunities for local government and a few priorities for community. So this is some of what local governments have done in the area over the last few years with regards to housing, increased density provisions, the development of smaller lot zones, encouraging more modest developments, bylaws allowing secondary suites and coach houses or secondary dwellings, and neighborhood planning processes that show a commitment towards providing a range of housing choices. So, you know, I mean, it's very easy to come in and say, "This is what local government should be doing," but it's also important to acknowledge what has been done, and I think that some of those steps, like coach houses and secondary suites, are an important part of the housing continuum. And then, our strategic plan here identifies a number of different challenges that local government face, and then some opportunities that can be taken on by local government. There's sort of what I would call low- to medium-hanging fruit, so some of the lowest fruit has been taken on already through things like secondary suites and coach houses or carriage houses, but there are some other opportunities to either produce barriers to different types of developments or to support or facilitate new housing development. One is that Gibson's does have a minimum house size for residential zones, so that is potentially a barrier for developments that are looking at smaller home types. And so, you know, there are avenues for relaxing the minimum house size or width that could either be done, you know, across the board in all residential zones, or there could be specific zones that are developed in order to allow for small, smaller homes, and I think that that's looked at a little bit already in the cluster zoning, but it could sort of be taken a step farther. The cost of development obviously is a big issue, and here just looking again at D C Cs and when D C Cs are relaxed or waived or reimbursed with regards to affordable housing, and I think council has had this discussion to some extent here already, and it's maybe just a matter of clarifying that, and when the housing policy is reviewed, maybe there will be some clauses around the relaxation of D C Cs. One challenges the potential loss of rental housing stock, so with the lack of federal financial incentives since the early 90s, there's been very little new rental stock put into the marketplace, but at the same time, we've also seen the conversion of some purpose-built rental into condominiums. That's not a huge issue here in the town of Gibson's, as there are just a few isolated apartment buildings that were originally built as purpose-built rental, but just to make council aware that there are bylaws that can be put into place, requiring that the developers who are doing a strategic conversion demonstrate a minimum or a maximum vacancy rate over the course of 12 months before they're allowed to convert. So if the vacancy rate is below a certain threshold that's determined by council, then they would not be allowed to do a conversion. If it's above that threshold, then they could. Then, another fourth challenge here is just that there is a bit of a variability in density bonusing across jurisdictions. The District of Seashells, and actually, this relates, I think, very closely to the policy conversations that are gonna happen after this presentation around Andre's recommendation for the approach to the Affordable Housing Policy to bring it in line to Seashells. So it's the same approach, which would make it easier for both nonprofits and developers to kind of understand the framework that local governments are working under. It's a bit of a different beast than the S C R D, because they have two zoning bylaws and a number of different electoral areas, so they sort of have the challenge of working to address the issues of each electoral area, but then also trying to unite those under one to two zoning bylaws, so it's a bit of a different challenge, but certainly bringing the density bonusing approach into line with what Seashells is doing would sort of create a local approach, and also along with best practices potentially. So that's the local government, and each of those barriers and opportunities is discussed in more depth in the strategic plan. But then the second sort of section of community challenges and priorities is really around what are local organizations doing to address and to drive or champion housing issues. And I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation that there is a strong need for emergency and supportive housing, and the Sunshine Coast Homeless Advisory Committee has been working very hard on that, and as I said, I think we've had some promising early conversations with B C Housing around potentially finding something for that, like that prestige shelter that would serve the needs of the current shelter population and potentially others with challenges in finding supportive housing on the coast. Priority number two that was identified, and these, sorry, I should take a step back, these, a lot of these priorities were identified through community workshops that were delivered across the Sunshine Coast during the summer and fall. So I did workshops in Gibson, Seashells, Roberts Creek, West House Sound, and Pender Harbor, and also did some outreach at local area planning committee meetings to let them know about them. So there were, some of the workshops were smaller than others, but generally there was an intent to do some good outreach and advertise for these workshops, and so there was a lot of, you know, a lot of community interest in seeing additional housing, the supportive housing piece being one of it. But priority number two was a major theme of all the workshops, and that's, you know, developing new rental and ownership opportunities, but clustered around the main development hubs. And here, there is a really strong voice from the committee to want to look at kind of a cluster style of development, so not unlike what you have in the Upper Gibson's Neighborhood Plan, but perhaps even a little bit more radical, with maybe some smaller homes and more of a village style, preserving green space on the outside, and maybe having some really strongly clustered homes together and opportunities for things like community gardens. And there was a lot of discussion of, you know, if you're able to do something like this, you're also able to potentially leverage other community benefits, like an additional co-op park, for example, or being able to design a space that you could then retrofit in solar panels over the long run. So a lot of discussion on how that kind of development could also be used towards a kind of developing a sustainable neighborhood model as well, as just the affordable piece. And really, the appetite is to see kind of a mixed tenure, so a mix of affordable ownership and rental, mixed income and mixed age communities, so having seniors who are looking to maybe downsize but remain independent, move into smaller units in these developments without necessarily giving up ownership or giving up their own home, and also being able to live close to families with young children and have that, you know, I mean, there's lots and lots of research around the benefits of cross-generational communities, and it provides benefits on both sides. So that was, again, the sort of main articulation of what folks would like to see around the development hubs of Gibson, Seashells, and potentially in the Deer Park and Roberts Creek as well, as those sort of not-quite-low but not-quite-medium-density neighborhoods that we see in the more rural areas. And then the third priority was really, this was voiced more in the areas of what I'd say, you know, Roberts Creek, West House Sound, Elton Stone, and the upper part of the peninsula, where we need to think about a model of rural affordable housing that really does work with the fact that the cheapest land is outside of maybe our community hubs. And I think I wanted to highlight in the strategic plan that there really is an existing process already at work here, and that's the smart farm work that's being done by Chad Hershler and the S C R D. I think they've done a great job, and they're, from what I understand, very close to having a draft set of bylaws that would outline, or zoning designation that would outline how smart farm would work from a zoning perspective and local government. And I think, you know, that's the piece of the puzzle that's a real challenge, is addressing the rural component, but it's so important here on the coast, and I think they've done an excellent job of it. And then from there, you know, I think Chad's managed to articulate that there are a number of different sort of ownership or partnership models, from the kind of private developer through to the more public trust model that could be used. And so, you know, we see an opportunity potentially from the Housing Society's perspective down the road to maybe partner with them on a proposal in a rural area as well. But those, that's really the three sort of key strategic priorities that we heard coming out of the workshop, that go above and beyond the local government work. So I'm happy to take comments or questions now, or...
Matt, and maybe a question for staff. You kept referring to your strategic plan. Have you got a copy of your strategic plan?
Oh, it did, I think...
Did I miss it?
If not, then the strategic plan, I mean, this presentation was based off of that. So the document was just finalized, I think, last week or the week before, and I thought I did submit it with my presentation, but maybe I didn't.
What we got was the summary of...
The summary of the term, okay. Then, I apologize for that. Yes, there's a strategic plan, it's about 12 or 15 pages long, and I'm happy to pass it along to Andre and I need to make sure it gets...
Could you explain to remind us what core housing is around your...
Yeah, sorry, I'm so used to this terminology that I forget that not everybody's always in... So core housing need is the definition of those who are in most housing need essentially, as defined by C M H C. And the definition, there are a number of thresholds or sort of criteria that would make one in core housing need. The first is that you are paying more than 30% of your household income towards shelter costs, so that's the cost of rent plus any utilities. Typically, when looking at that, C M H C will drop out people under 25, because they're often seen as being in a sort of formative stage of life, and so maybe paying more towards housing costs, so you're seeing folks who are kind of already into established adulthood being captured in that. But in addition to the affordability criteria, there are a couple of other criteria that C M H C uses, which is suitability and adequacy. So suitability would be that you have the right-sized house or home for the number of household members, so if you have 12 children, two bedrooms, that would be inadequate housing. And, or, sorry, unsuitable housing and inadequate housing is what I'd say is poorly maintained or lacking services. So if you don't have running water, for example, or if you're on a boil water advisory regularly, or you have a constant leak in your roof, or you have mold or any issues that have to do with maintenance like that, then that would be another example of core housing need. And so typically, if you are in one of those scenarios, then you would be in core housing need, and often you'll be in one or more of those scenarios.
Thanks.
Thanks, Matt, for all this information. We're gonna talk about it a bit more, but just on the mixed tenure, I'm just wondering whether you think a town like ours, if you're referring to cash-in-lie type option, if that's, if we're ever in danger of getting to a place where we have one, I guess, they probably still don't call them the projects, but like one area of town where that's quality affordable housing is in... Is that something we need to consider here?
Certainly, I think it's a consideration as you're looking at new development proposals. I would say, you know, that there are ways of addressing that, and one would be with, to work with the local, whoever's providing housing, to ensure that it's distributed. So with the proposal and the strategic plan, and I think what we'd be looking at with regards to making use of the town land if that moves forward, as we've been looking at it, we'd be looking at probably a mixed-income community, and so it wouldn't all be, you know, people at the lowest threshold of income, it would rather be a bit of a blend. And again, you know, if you're eligible for an affordable ownership unit, then you might be in a slightly different scenario or time of your life or income level than somebody who's looking for an affordable rental unit, but by putting those together, then we're creating a neighborhood that's a bit more mixed income. And I think, you know, that's not always possible. I think certain kinds of housing, for example, if you're looking at mental health housing, there are models where you can blend that more with market income, but in some cases you need to have that be its own development. But I think in general, what the town is probably gonna be looking at in terms of proposals coming forward with affordable housing is a partnership with a developer who has land, and so then again, you'll see that mixed income. But certainly, you know, I think you want to be cautious and not sort of parallling people, but I think that the approach that the Housing Society is trying to take would be intentionally sidestepping that from the outset.
Okay, you wanna stick around for a little bit here? A second part, thank you. So before we move to Director of Planning, are there any orders at this point?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this report follows up nicely on the presentation we just heard, based on the strategic plan that you personally didn't get. Sorry that I didn't spot that earlier. We'll make sure we get a copy from Matt, and then forward it to you. The Affordable Housing Report outlines different options, and this presentation is a general portion, we're talking about the town's role, and then more specifically on the particular changes that have been clear at this point. And depending on where council's interest lie, you can either discuss it all the way, or I can first go through it, then go back to the slides that you want to discuss further, whatever works, so just feel free to let me know, I need to pass. This reflects what Matt was also talking about, the different types of affordable housing, as you will, and the top table shows the housing spectrum, as we like to call it, a range of affordable housing options for anybody in the community. And on the far right side, you have the market housing options, ownership or rental, and then there's a couple of different categories of, housing categories for households and people that either need special support, or they may have limited income. Those are more spelled out and more detailed here for purposes of our discussion. But there's a large number of households that look for housing in those categories, even if you look at non-market housing, which is rental housing, or maybe affordable ownership. Yeah, with the incomes in this area and the housing prices on the housing market, it's fair to say that a large portion of the community has to be creative in finding housing options. The town's role for this is somewhat limited, as you're probably very aware of, because we don't have a lot of funding to throw around, or land, or housing buildings to manage per se. And we do have a key role, that's mainly related to land use, to facilitate housing development, but you may remember from the past, if there are initiatives from nonprofit societies on the coast, it's hard for the town to provide substantial support. There are some options, and that's what we'll talk about later in the presentation, but I just wanted to set that stage of that the town alone could not solve our affordable housing issues. It's something that's way bigger than just the town of Gibson's, but we can contribute to solutions. Got to skip over this slide, it outlines the key housing needs on the coast, services and shelter for the homeless, seniors housing, or other support needs, renters in general, but also homeownership. Yeah, Matt was referring to the strategic plan, and this is a table that summarizes the issues that are listed in that report. Some of it, we've already had some work on in recent years, mainly related to minimum sizes, for example, for apartments and condominiums, though they're gone now. When we updated the zoning bylaw to allow for garden suites, we took care of that particular issue. And earlier on, when the town introduced secondary suites and smaller lots in Upper Gibson's, for example, but also the subdivision bylaw that was devised a couple of years ago, those are all examples of how the town has been working to update our requirements to facilitate housing that could be more affordable. There are also a couple of items missing still, and we'll get to that later, of course, of this presentation. Let me see, the provincial dyslexia is one of the things that also is in the table, it's something that one of the council members brought up last year, it's a guide that was published last year or about a year ago, where the province wanted to signal how they expect municipalities to deal with affordable housing and community amenities. Because I think there was a probably a sentiment with the province that some municipalities have become quite creative, maybe quite demanding, and the province, even though they haven't legislated this in detail, they have reminded us through this brochure that they're showing limits to what municipalities can do. These are three main options that they were commenting on in the brochure. That's the bonusing is explicitly allowed in the Local Government Act, it's a technical term for provisions in your zoning bylaw that set out how you could achieve a higher density in exchange for community amenities in affordable housing. That's a recommended approach. Good approach, community amenity contributions, or something that is applied in larger municipalities where they actually have a charge for these community amenities. Province is recommending if you do that, you have to approach it like a development cost charge, where they have a list of all these community amenities, the cost, then divide it over the expected amount of development perhaps, and somehow come up with this charge. Would be quite complicated or somewhat challenging for us to do. And the one that they recommend or avoid, because they feel that's not really in the interest of housing prices, is negotiations and arm wrestling based on a lift in the land value of property if it gets resolved. Okay, now about to get into the actual changes and additions to the housing policy. Any questions or comments at this point? Okay, we'll just proceed. So for our own affordable housing policy that we've been looking at for a while, but also been waiting to hear back from the outcome of the Sunshine Coast Housing Committee's efforts to community consultation and formulate this strategic plan, these are the options that are available today to look at and to provide further input on. Voting changes to make the policy more in line with the Local Government Act, definitions, specifications about the type of housing they're actually talking about, support options for each type of housing, a strategic brochure policy, and a starting framework for the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund to give us some guidance of how we will use that policy in the future. Time for the first one, I'm just going through all of them, so feel free to talk back. It's a simple rewording of, there's a couple of times that the policy it says require, and the province is making it clear that... And the province is making it clear that they feel that's not within the authority of local government to do. So I replace it with encourage generally, so to make it more in line with the Local Government Act. I decided to add some definitions, so it was clear what is meant with these terms. It's more of an effort to make it clear, to make the policy clear also for developers. We hand out policy in the future for anybody to look at, and this is what we expect. Trying to find, to define what affordable housing is, community amenities. Community amenities was already somewhat defined in the policy, specifically saying that it was improvements to parks, community or social construction services. And the phrase "to offset the impact of proposed development" is borrowed from the approach from the province in their brochure. They're pretty keen on the connection between increased development results in more demand on your community services. So therefore, I thought that should probably be combined in the definition here. Cash-in-lu is typically an amount of cash that we may accept instead of providing affordable housing or community amenities on site. And finally, housing agreement, we do have a housing agreement. And it has a mechanism in it that I think will be useful also in the future. When it's a leverage fund, I'll actually have a slide about as well down the road to specifically highlight that issue. Clear change relates to the type of housing. Our current policy is very broad-based. It says, well, it's any housing that's achievable for a household that earns up to the median income of our community. But doesn't say anything about if it's ownership or rental or size. And that's something we ran into in our previous discussions with some of the developers, about what type of housing we would expect. And you may recall a discussion where, for example, the Leon Building, the South Place Building, we have relatively small apartments for certain price points. At the same time, we were looking at a proposal for apartment, whether it were duplex units or family units even, with a price program, and it seemed to be quite a difference in value of money, so to say. So what I've tried to do with this policy is to outline some categories. It's hard for me to pinpoint those price points exactly. I think it's in one of the rule of thumb, so open for suggestions. Also, I was planning to make sure I pick Matt's spring on that as well, or even the Housing Committee may be able to advise on this. But at least I wanted to start to differentiate between different types of housing. And the 240,000 is a number that we gleaned from the statistics two years ago. It takes an approach from the 2014 Housing Needs Assessment, which pinpoints what is affordable, what's not affordable. So it's a result of the median income of the community and what that income would be able to pay for. And that's around 240,000. So that's a starting point, even though if you look at current MLS listings, it's very hard to find a single-family house with a piece of land below 320,000. So maybe one or two. And the other option is to buy a mobile home in the park. It's definitely cheaper than 240,000. That's probably starting at maybe around 80,000. So I thought it was a starting point there. Then for condominiums, I also looked at MLS listings last week. And these price points are definitely at the lower end of what is available right now on the market. So therefore, I thought it was reasonable to take that, because if it would be priced below that or up to that point, it would definitely be providing something that the market currently doesn't provide. And that's what was my thinking there. Size, 1,000 square feet, something that came up in the apartment subdivision. I thought it was a reasonably reasonable amount of space for definitely for a two-bedroom. One-bedroom could be sooner, obviously. I also looked at, actually, at MLS for that as well. And I noticed that typically, two-bedroom apartments are a bit bigger than 1,000. But it seemed to be an underlying limit, and I thought, and same for the one-bedroom ones. Then going to the rental ones, a bit of a more simpler explanation. I took the median rents that are identified in the 2014 assessment with the idea that any unit below or up to that median is close, usually close to the average. So that rent level is, it would be an affordable rental unit. That is probably would have been at least some of the people and households earning less than our median income. Going to number four, talking about the town, sorry, there's a question.
Thanks, thank you, Andre. As far as the rentals go, is there any, maybe you guys could answer this question, other than setting a monthly amount? Are there restrictions as to like increases, like annual increases or anything like that? Or should anything like that be set up?
It would depend on the context of a given development. So I think if somebody, this is meant to set out, say, as part of development, it could be two scenarios. Either as part of market development, private developer creates rental units. And if he's prepared to commit to these types of rents, it's probably going to be, it's probably a rent that is lower than the market rent for new units, I would think. In that case, you would have on top of this requirement, you'd have the housing agreement outlining how that rent either is going to be sustained or maybe how it's maybe specified for a number of years or there's restriction or increases. So that's definitely what you would do for market development. If it's a nonprofit that maybe seeks your support and commits to these rent levels, it depends on maybe the size or the goal of the society. And I'm not sure in that case if it would be necessary to tie that down. But it may well be a requirement as well as part of financial support. Say, if somebody wanted a grant from the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund or Affordable Rental, there may be strings attached that the town would like to pursue. It's a long answer for yes, thank you. Okay, talking about what can the town do? And so a couple of things already in place. We don't have to worry about it. Well, we should keep an eye on it and make sure it stays up to date. But our regulatory changes we already made are in place. The key things we really can do is looking at our servicing requirements, because they are usually a big portion of the cost for developments, either market or nonprofit development. Our subdivision by law kicks in with requirements for improvements to adjacent roads, sidewalk, et cetera. Those are things we can consider to vary or reduce. And you may recall a proposal in September for a rental project of seeking that kind of a support. The trade-off in that case, of course, is that somebody else, or usually the town eventually, has to do those improvements themselves on town budget. The other one is the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund. And I think we can consider ourselves lucky now that we have quite a fund in there now of around $250,000, following two contributions last year. Sounds like a large amount, but I also realize that if you help out one, two or three projects, that may be done. Because it's expensive to really make a dent into project development budgets or project budgets for affordable housing. And the third option is also something we're looking into with Matt and with Flick Homes, and Land Trust, I should say, is to look at size, possibly entirely on that. A development cost charge is something that Matt did mention, and it is an option that is available in the legislation. At this point, staff, we're not really proposing or recommending that to you. The background to that is our limited financial means. I think this topic also came up when we discussed development cost charges. Given the town's tight budget around infrastructure, renewal, maintenance even, it's an expensive thing to do. There are other options for it, the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund mainly. So what somebody could do, somebody could apply to get a grant from the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund to offset development cost charges. In that case, the town will still make sure that development cost charges or reserve funds are being supplied with funding. It's a choice, so if council would feel that it should be different, absolutely, let me know. But at this point, it seems to be a logical approach to take given our financial limitations and the right decisions.
Much flexibility over waiving or reducing DCCs, such a situation do we have right now? When we were talking about the DCC's report that came in, I think that was the option there was going to be a formula where there's no, you know,
You see, currently, you already have the option either with old or the new DCC program. You could consider a bylaw or you could make changes to consider reducing or waiving DCCs for certain projects. Affordable rental, affordable ownership, I'm not sure, affordable rental and market rental, I think that's the one that is.
And I think there's provision where if the communities are aimed towards being sustainable and energy efficient, that the DCCs cannot be waived in certain circumstances as well.
Thank you, yes, that's the one I was looking for. The current DCC program, though, doesn't anticipate that. So the way we have calculated our proposed new rates is assuming that there is no offsetting that's going to be considered. But you could build it in, which we haven't done it so far. Because if you would build it into your DCC program, you make an assumption about how much you may forego over time and that that portion would be put back on the DC rates for the rest of the projects that need to pay DCCs.
Actually, three of them is, there was two separate matters. The waiving of DCCs, if you're referring to the percentage that from zero to 100, that the town can opt to basically buy something to the developer to pay, in our case. It's 99% in essence, so. The issue with waiving is that while council has a flexibility to waive, the money that gets waived has to come from a different fund. And that's, so in essence, you just, we would have to take it from a different fund to the planners that we can't just waive the development cost charge alone. Now was suddenly the case in Sea Shop Lu Alliance Group, if I remember, I know you were part of that in essence. At some point, it doesn't have to necessarily happen at the same time. The money that gets waived needs to be to the planners, and that's part of the rationale for that.
Okay, number five, the strategical version, which is the term for creating ownership units out of rental apartments. And we've had one example, I'm not sure if this was this council or the previous council. There was one building on Gibson's Way that went through a strategical version process of commercial and residential units. Now, given the characteristics of our housing market, rentals, our amount of rental housing is limited on the coast. Our housing market is dominated by ownership housing. We haven't seen a lot of new rentals being built for the reason that Matt referenced, that the tax regime and other incentives were removed in early 90s. With that in mind, I was thinking about if I would borrow from other communities and use the vacancy rate as an indicator. I have preference for this particular option, because I feel that even in our cycles on the Sunshine Coast, which can be quite a downturn and quite an uptake, I'm worried that during the times that the real estate markets may not be that strong and there's maybe more vacancies, we would produce our rent supply, maybe lose one or two buildings. But then as soon as the housing market would become hot again, that our rental vacancy rate jumps down very quickly as well. And then those years would be gone forever. So if you have this particular policy where, given the limited rental supply we have on the Sunshine Coast and in Gibson's, I would suggest council, as a starting point, would support strategical versions, except maybe if there's some kind of replacement that maybe opens the door for either solutions on a different side or even solutions where maybe a nonprofit is working on a project and there could be synergy between the two, where someone gets approval for a strategical version, but in exchange for support for a, maybe, the types of cluster projects, cluster housing projects that Matt was referring, our reference in our strategic plan for housing. And then finally, the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund. It outlined a couple of criteria and some policy statements around it that I thought could be useful for this. And I'm hoping for your suggestions as well and your preferences. I was thinking, the first bullet is about how long that money would be in the fund. And it relates to a discussion that I've heard in other municipalities as well. We're having this money, but we're not using it, and it should go towards housing relatively soon. So I was thinking, well, maybe the policy would say something to that effect by saying, well, we'd like to use this money within the five years of receipt. And in the meantime, it also means that maybe there's a little bit of a trigger for staff then to look for options to actually do that. Now, there's also, you can also go completely different direction, of course, because you could also think that, well, maybe you want to create a legacy fund. You want to keep the money in and you're only going to use the, say, the interest, which is all at the moment. And that's a very different approach. But that also has its reasons and its rationale, right? Because then you're growing it over time. My concern with that one is that it doesn't really do much for our current housing needs. The current projects around will be a very long time before that fund is up to a level that is actually substantially useful. So that's why I didn't really want to suggest it to you, but just that you're aware, it's just a choice. And I think it's a logical choice, but it's up to you to support it and decide if that works for the town. Second bullet is about tax revenue. I did want to mention that, because at one point, we may be out of funding and maybe no funding came in just yet, because it depends on the amount of market development that will happen. And I just wanted to identify the option for council that it's possible that council at one point will say there's a certain amount in a certain year's budget that we actually add a little bit to this fund, if only to be in a position where we could still work with a lot of parties to support projects. And then the last bullet has a whole list of different things and tries to define, okay, what can people ask financial support for? And there's a couple of different things with different emphasis, but we should mention them quickly. First one, project development funding is, it's a term for funding that is usually requested early on in the process. And there's also other agencies that do provide some of that. CMHC typically has starting seed fund, funding for affordable housing projects. The town could also do that, it could support visibility analysis, business planning. And then those are small notes. Then the development cost charges, even though staff is not recommending to build it into your DCC program, you can still have that as an eligible goal on the discount. Require offset works, that's another option. Maybe there are works that we really didn't want to waive, per se. Maybe there's a cycle connection that we really would like to see built. Or maybe it's something that council decided we're not going to waive, but we expect this to be part of the project. However, maybe this gives another opportunity to relieve some of that worry. Contribution to facilitate securing funds from other sources, that's another one I thought was important. Because over the past years, decades, we've seen all kinds of cost charity arrangements and also offers from senior governments, usually the province and the federal government saying, well, we'll match your funding or you can only get this funding if you have at least some much local funding. Those things will, those scenarios will continue to be playing out, projects probably. So we'd be good to have that in mind as well. Cost of construction, just straightforward, although I would expect the town's contribution will be small compared to the total cost. And then finally, I was thinking about operations, because that's another key need usually for affordable housing, especially if you talk about subsidized rents, for example, or support needs, service, special services that you provide. Nonprofits have to work hard to create this business case and also get, somehow, somebody needs to pay for the operations. And I thought that generally, the town probably shouldn't get into that. But I wanted to make an exception for services or for shelter, because we know from the past that the funding commitment from the province has been, has varied. And let's put it that way. And so it's kind of a safeguard that, say, if things don't work out in the future, but the town is still, has still a decent sized affordable housing fund, we may be able to help something, or even if it's part of a strategy, perhaps, the community could say, well, we have this amount of local funding. Brothers of V C, please match or add to it, right? So those are ideas, and there may be other ideas that you have that we want to add or maybe change these particular provisions. So those are the changes to do for the housing fund. And then my final slide is more of a And then my final slide is more of a discussion topic. I just wanted to make this really clear to everybody because it's a policy choice and direction that you could take. But if council feels that it should be a different way, it's good to know because it will influence how the policy is set up. So I'm talking here about the underlying rationale and the kind of the thinking behind these changes. And what I wanted to highlight is that I think it's clear that the housing needs on the coast are the greatest for people at risk of homelessness, renters and for households with special needs. The second item is that the town is very limited means to support projects for those categories of housing. And the third bullet talks about affordable ownership, it's a different type of affordable housing. It's easier for us to secure probably for market development. But it's something that we discussed earlier on, about a year ago. And it's a bit complicated because it means that if you want to create this affordable ownership supply and build this stock, you have to somehow manage that and keep an eye on it. Last year, council, since 2014, council decided, well, we don't want to go in that direction just yet. So then you got a goal. I think, given the other needs that we have, that's probably not our main goal. I think that's what the market largely provides. So the role of market development and ownership of affordable housing, the way I see it, and that's kind of underlying to this, all these changes, is that it's important, it has a role to play because it's probably one of the few options that market development can easily provide in their developments. It's hard for them to suddenly have a portion of such or such grants in market development. And it also has benefits to individual households that may be able to buy a housing unit that has an unusually lower price point. But I think the goal of it all should be to eventually translate that benefit that was provided in the market development, get it somehow back to the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund so that it actually can support the other housing needs through projects and profits. So that's what an underlying assumption is to this policy. And it's a policy direction that I think council started to make last year when we talked about our ownership program. Just wanted to highlight this to you, to make you aware of that. And yeah, looking forward to hear the thoughts on that, if that's still in place. And with that, that's a summary and we can flip back to slides if we need certain topics to dig in a bit deeper. Oh, I, one of the council was asked for a track changes version of the housing policy and I printed that off, so maybe handy for the discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tom, Andre. Yeah, I can see they've done quite a bit of work, which certainly I think making the policy look a little more focused, I guess, probably the best way to put it. So basically, as far as the affordable housing part, I used to see maintaining this sort of dual approach of either providing affordable market housing in particular project or cash and the like, depending on those sort of two avenues depending on the circumstances. The community amenities part of it is not as well defined and we haven't been very successful at getting anything to a community amenities reserve fund at all. Actually, I've had great success though recently on the affordable housing. I have a policy that's established almost 10 years ago. We're just finding out some good money in there as a result of these projects, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Eric, if I may add. What we did get was some onsite amenities, as you will. I remember that for Son's Place, for example, they agreed to making more of their frontage, which is on private land, probably accessible. There's another project in Park Road, which was a commitment now in a covenant that there would be a walkway extension constructed. So we've had some success in that regard and pinpointing practical things onsite. But yeah, you're right, no money in our community amenities reserve fund at all.
The Affordable Housing Reserve Funds, or the objects that you set up, potential objects in there, I think are broad enough to give a fair bit of discretion to any given council at a time to decide how to apply those funds. I think that it's important to certainly identify the type of the housing, where we are in the housing spectrum, what we're really trying to support because we do have limited resources and you said, you know, there are 250,000 and that reserve fund could dissipate rather quickly if not judicious about how it's applied. So there's certainly the, making sure that we're focused on where we want to apply our efforts, where we can provide the most benefit. And then secondly, ensuring that we have adequate certainty in the policy so that staff and developers have a pretty good idea going into this, what they're, what they're looking at. There's a couple of principles that I see that are important.
Thank you. I want to follow up on that point because I remember sitting at a, in a committee meeting and a developer in Seashell was saying, okay, we're gonna increase this density on our project and then we're gonna give you this little piece of land, right? Do you remember that? It's pretty recent, so. And then there was like the discussion entailed about, okay, this land's in a funny spot and what about services, what about access, whatever. So to that point where somebody's, you can, developers gonna look at a policy and maybe get clearly, you know, not given these like options or, hey, I'm gonna, you know, you know what I'm saying? Like maybe you just say, that's just not even an option. And like instead of like worrying about, then you have to run services and that was the big thing. Now we're gonna get services in there. So then you've got, you've got your reserve fund that'll get taxed and then the community trust that has to come up with these funds to develop this property for affordable housing. Rather than say, well, you either just build the affordable housing units or you have your higher density, you sell those units wherever you want, but here's the cash and loot. Does it, will it be that streamlined? Like I think that's the way it should, that's the way it should go instead of having all these little things hanging up in the air.
Yes, the option of providing land is not specifically mentioned right now. It has its complications, I think it's a good observation. I think the current policy is set up to either get a unit or units in the development or otherwise get cash. And I think that's probably preferable because you're right, yeah, getting land is one thing, but then what next? And it may be possible still, that may be the case at some point, but I think, yeah, council probably would need to consider very carefully, okay, is that land in the right location? Are we just getting a little back corner somewhere? I don't want to necessarily close the door on that, but it's not really a central approach at the moment unless we want to make it as one of the main options.
I have one comment and one question. My comment is under the reserve fund and I was just curious of other people's, if they felt the same or maybe I'm just missing it. But I'm trying to picture a situation where I feel really good about someone coming to get money from the reserve fund to do project development, business planning. I guess it comes back to me like I, I would, I'd want someone to come sort of ready to go with something to show that a certain amount of effort and, and work had been put into a project before they came to us. And so I find myself tripping over that first bullet and it's very important. I'm not sure that, that's the one that I trip over. I think, okay, everything else, they're ready to go, they've put some work into it, so. But that being said, maybe there isn't funding for more feasibility studies and planning. But there's not a whole lot of situations in the world where you get a bunch of funding upfront to do your planning. So that's the one I trip over. And then my question is, Matt, you touched on briefly that our, we have a touched on that there is right now a maximum of our lot sizes and we could have flexibility on making, making houses smaller.
Minimum, minimum house, dwelling sizes?
That's what I was trying to say, yeah, and then we didn't talk about that again, so I didn't want that.
Yeah, and I, I mean, Andre, Andre has the numbers, should have the numbers at his fingertips with regards to that. And it's something that we've talked about, we've talked about it at the committee level as well and in Seashell they have minimum width requirements, so they don't actually go with the unit size or dwelling size. They, but you do have to be a certain width on the street frontage. And, you know, I think that there are historical reasons I don't want to get into as to why that those exist in our zoning bylaws, but at the same time, they do, they are a big barrier for people who are wanting to do smaller home development. So, I mean, Andre, I don't know, do you want to speak to the small homes and dwelling size or their?
It'd be interesting, like are we going to review some of that stuff?
Yes, so I can't tell them the exact numbers off the top of my head. Figures, yeah, that's fair. But no, it's definitely on the radar this year. Going to work on the zoning bylaw, make some housekeeping changes and some changes to update to follow up on the OCP changes. And this is one of the, yeah, it's marked, it's something that should come out. So we're going to remove those, yeah. And then I have a question back to Matt, if you may. Does this one mean about the item that here the councilor, Senator was mentioning about project development? Is this one meaning if you could?
Yeah, and I think, I think it's a good, I think it's a good point that there needs to be a bit of a project framing in place before you come forward to ask for money and with regards to other sources. So as Andre said, CMHC does provide some initial seed funding, $10,000 grant and then another $10,000 forgivable loan for the initial project development work. Typically, so typically what would be achieved through that, the CMHC funds is you may get a needs assessment, which we've already done here on the coast. You may use that to do an initial financial feasibility assessment. And I'll just use the Housing Society's partnership with Click as an example. There, we've, they've actually, they will be doing a pro bono for us as the developer. They're doing the financial feasibility, so we'll have that level of development. But then there are a number of other development costs that as a developer you'd have a finance behind. Things like geotechnical reports, environmental surveys, potentially open house and public engagement around the development. There would be, that's, and that's where it gets tricky for nonprofit housing societies because generally it's a volunteer board. And so if they're, if they're at the phase where they're like, you know what? It looks like we're financially feasible to do the project. We've got our feasibility assessment done here, but we need additional funds in order to do some additional legwork to make sure that it, you know, from an engineering point of view, it's gonna work on the land and to do a little bit more in-depth site drawings. And you could wrestle some of that up from the community and volunteers, but generally you need a little bit of project development funding to draw upon the pool, to sort of, to have in place. And one of the reasons why I think it might, it might be feasible or it might be a good idea here in specific scenarios is that VC housing will provide that, so that's where you would go. But if you want to go outside of VC housing, you want to do a housing development that doesn't necessarily access provincial dollars. And I think that's one of the things the Land Trust is looking at doing is is there, is there a model that's replicable outside of accessing provincial and federal dollars? Because if we can make something that can be kind of done from a project to project basis, not having those strings on a housing development gives the society a lot more leeway and what it can do. But it also means you can't access those interim project development dollars around the stuff that comes after the feasibility but before the actual shovels in the ground. Does that make sense?
Thank you, that, that does, and I feel better about that because now I understand that it's some of those reports that also would fall, very specific reports and that we're looking at potentially different innovative funding that might not get that, that planning funding. So that being said, now I feel better about that.
And it may just be a bit more clarity in the language on that bullet.
The chart that had the Affordable Housing Security Plan recommendations, so one of the items was varying density bonus provisions challenged. So town can consider a Seashell approach, what's that?
Yes, let me see, specifically about, that's the bonus provisions. In Seashell, the official community plan outlines options. It's more geared towards the community amenities actually, where they have each stage for a certain amount of, say, parkland. It does give us a little bit. Adaptable housing is one of their amenities, there were two others. So it's a, it's a, it's a model or a system where you outline a couple of types of amenities you'd like to see. And in their case, it's mostly land-based or related to the housing units. And based on that, there's additional density. So it's something we haven't explored for Gibson's yet, how we might do that. But something, because that's one of the recommended approaches from the province, it's, that's another next step for affordable housing strategy to look at our zoning bylaw or the OCP and outline those density bonus options.
Right, I think that's what you were referring to in your report where it talks about aligning the provincial best practices and then you had a sort of notation at the bottom recommending that the town move towards a density bonus approach for affordable housing, that's what you're talking about?
And if I can just throw a comment on that. Yeah, as I think Andre had touched on in his report, but there are two, two avenues by which the province recommends that municipalities approach the density bonusing process. And one, one is having a sort of whole, all the assets and development costs that the town will accrue over the next 10 to 15 years and build them into a budget so that with each development you can ask for a portion of those funds. And that usually involves a very comprehensive but also time-consuming and resource-consuming audit of everything. And it may be something that the town has already in place, but kind of budgeting that out on a development by development basis can be fairly resource-intensive for staff. So the other approach that the province recommends is, is within your zoning bylaw, whether it's on all residential zones or in the relevant residential zones where you're going to approve a density bonus of some form, to have your base density. So a developer could come in and essentially build 16 units, if that's the base density per hectare, without giving anything to the Affordable Housing Reserve, or they could be bumped up to say 26. But for that bump, then they're starting to contribute. And so what it does is it clarifies to the developer where there's going to be a negotiation or not a negotiation. So if they go with the base density, then they just have the sort of minimum requirements that the town has in place. But if they want to go for more than that, they know they can. But then, then at that point, they're negotiating an affordable housing contribution and probably an amenity contribution as well with the planning staff. So that's typically the way it would work. And for the district of Seashell, they have those base and maximum densities laid out in their OCP at this point. So it's very clear which residential zones you could do the density bonusing in and sort of what the minimum and maximum are.
Did we not go partway down the road of setting a base density in this recent revision, a review of the OCP? And so would it, with its zoning bylaws, just be built up to match that?
Yes, we definitely base that on our OCP designations and what we included now are ranges in the floor space ratios, which in fact are not of the available floor area or on property. We have those ranges now in our OCP. Not quite set up as bonus density ranges just yet, but yeah, you're right that it's probably needs to be the base for zoning bylaw changes.
Would that range, I guess, that's more of a, generally that range with the low end would be the base and the high end be the bonus up, you know, bonus flexibility option?
Yeah, generally that would be, you could do it that way. But it also means that at that time, we need to take another look at those ranges and see how it would work out within zoning bylaw. Zoning bylaw uses different definitions and the FSR ranges and the OCP are meant to be very general. And we're just getting some more experience with it. In some cases, they seem to be high, other cases they seem to be low. So it's something that requires tweaking and as part of the either zoning bylaw change probably, I'd say. Or even in your OCP, we would need to investigate that through and make some floor positions.
Okay, so what do you need to go forward here, right?
I was hoping to get a sense today of if you support the additions and changes to the policy, if there are any other topics that you'd like to add or change. That's the key goal for today. For the density bonusing, that's something that's a bigger topic that will follow later. And I think, I was hoping that with these changes, I think for the housing policy itself, the council policy, I think, I feel like I have probably most of it on paper, at least identified which topics need to be covered. So if there's other topics that we also would like to add to this policy, I would need to know that.
It'd be very thorough, and the presentation we received as well. One question I have in finalizing the wording of this, we do have numbers based on 2014 estimates here, and we're mentioning that the market hasn't changed enough to update those, really, they're still applicable, but I do wonder about how we update the policy, if we can. It could be done automatically. Rather than have 2014.
Yes, what I anticipate, I think this is the census year, so in 2017 or 2018, the census data will become available. That's also then probably four or five years into the housing needs assessment. I expect that by that time, we'll probably have updated information for our area. I do think it's useful then to come back to council with a little update to this policy and say, oh, we got new numbers, maybe the numbers changed, but these are unchanged numbers. It's also a good moment then to see whatever experience we had in the meantime with applying this policy and make any other tweaks necessary. So, but we can definitely add some wording around that. So that's, that expectation captures in the policy for future reference.
I guess I'm concerned that in this part of the world, these numbers can change a lot quicker than. I mean, because it's not all, it's all the actual research you've done.
Yeah, if I can just comment on that. So typically, you can get really good real estate data on an annual basis from the Greater Vancouver Real Estate Association, which we're a part. So tracking home prices is fairly easy to do. The income data typically is where it's much harder to track it on a year-by-year basis, and that is what we rely on the long-form census for. So, you know, it may be that if you're, if you're looking specifically at house prices, I think I definitely agree with the statement that things can fluctuate pretty rapidly, but you could track that through the Real Estate Association data in their annual releases, and they'll do customized data requests fairly easily. But then the income data may be on a five-year basis and aligned with census releases.
So if I actually understand this correctly, in the event this threshold price around 240,000 is really, is based on income anyway, so the income is sort of setting that, it doesn't really matter what happens to the market to some extent. Market goes down below that, well, that's fine and dandy, and if it goes up, we're still using that number, at least until such time as. I don't know, it'll only be done probably, I think, since, there at census time, I'm guessing. Does that make sense? I mean, you know, one could, under that provisions about affordable, if you really want to go to that extent, you could add a provision, you're saying that the affordability levels to be reviewed following that. Let's see, census, 34 years, is it? Five, four, five, four, five. Whatever that word would be, we couldn't talk about that. Maybe one possibility, because that's what's driving the level that we're choosing based on the 30%.
There's also the rent.
BC Housing does update its housing income limits on a regular basis, so those are a rental threshold below which it's considered affordable. So that could be an easy proxy for local rental rates, although maybe not local ownership rates. Yeah, that's BC Housing would search.
All right, I'm just watching the time here. So, we see, can we move this forward to councillors' ears, or are you wanting to do some more tweaking there?
Let me see. I think there's a couple of little tweaks that I can still do, that's pretty straightforward. And what I could do is forward the policy then to, let me see, maybe not February, it depends. There's a couple of things I'd like to break some out of people's brains on as well, but I could bring this policy back either in a couple of weeks for council to update the council policy at least, and then the next step later this year is then to follow up on the density bonus provisions. That's what we could do.
Especially if we're probably considering councillor White's suggestion of opening some sort of review period in there. Okay, so in that case, we're just asked for a motion to receive the report, and move on that. Councillor White was just asking if that could just be brought straight to council then?
Yes.
Yeah?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, councillor White, second, councillor St James, have a moment, favor. Okay, thanks for your work on that, guys. Any queries at this point? So move on to discussion on strategic priorities.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just through you, realizing the timing as well. In your first term, council.
Yeah, sort of just in reference to the timing, they've talked about the 4 o'clock, but. So I need to finish this one by 4:00. Does anybody else have a lead before that? Okay.
So during your first term, council developed strategic objectives, as you can see here in Seashell. Never, through that process, never fully completed the full strategic plan. And so what we have here is framework for a strategic plan would include with a vision and mission, as well as the goals and the objectives. We've got decent objectives and goals that you worked through. The actions, strategies, and the initiatives, my understanding of what we sort of need to work through today, and also create the basis for next week's event, the public event, to similarly gather input from the community and LA field, what actions or initiatives or strategies could be identified to help the town meet its stated objectives. So to assist with that, we have broken down each objective, and then the goals are there. And so what I wanted to suggest that we go through, just have a brief discussion about each one. Also wanted to suggest that we send you these documents that you could sort of complete in your own time, per se. Also, so we'd collect that next week at the event, that input gathered as well, and of course, through staff, do that process, which we're somewhat indirectly working through for budget submissions and working with plans. All towards the vision of having a draft plan for council to consider for mid-March, which will run parallel to your budget discussions. That's sort of our understanding of it. If you have specific questions about next week's event, you can sort of deal with that. For your purposes, Mr. Mayor or council, what's most efficient, we've prepared to just collect some ideas from you today, just have a bit of a discussion about each one. Is there a? May I have a span? Sorry, what was that? Yeah. Breaking those down, for the main objective, one of the objectives, excellence in community engagement, and the actions you had identified is how to go about remoring Gibson's north of the community. What would you feel would be sort of an action or initiative, or, again, I don't want some big deal of pressure to come up with these ideas today as we speak, it's just to sort of flash up. I understand was what you were asking of the council. On these objectives. We've got. Again, let's see how.
I think each councillor came prepared with action items for each. And I'm not, I'm not exactly sure which mine, which ages mine go to, but I almost feel like it might be easier to start from there, rather than to start from trying to think of one for each one that we might not have.
More flexible, more?